It's six o'clock and it's time for our regular Crescent City City Council meeting. And Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall, Councilmember Shalong, Councilmember Hawley.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Anea.
Here. Staff of the pledge, Councilmember Westfall, would you please use the buzzer?
Ready to begin? My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with every gain of justice for all.
Before we do our acknowledgements, our city attorney, Mr. Black, was there anything to report out of our closed session?
No, no final actions were taken in closed session. Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. We're at acknowledgements and I'm going to read a pro- present a proclamation tonight entitled, "A Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, proclaiming the month of April 2012 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month." In the audience this evening, we have Ms. Liz Page and Ms. Esther Rodriguez. Thank you for coming. Let me read this proclamation. Where has sexualized violence affects childrens, youth, adults, and elders of all genders, from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, with public health and social justice implications for every person in Crescent City? And where has staff and volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Center provide 24-hour services to survivors and their significant others to support those impacted, improve responses, and ensure that survivors are not revictimized? And where has the NCRCT encourages every person to end sexualized violence by providing prevention, education, and awareness-raising programs through Delnor Counties and Humboldt Counties? And where has no one person, organization, or community can eliminate sexualized violence on their own, but can, through collaboration and partnership, work together towards social justice for all? Now, therefore, we, the Crescent City City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and reaffirm our commitment to the North Coast Race Rape Crisis Team and its vision, a world without violence. Present.
First, we want to start by saying thank you for your ongoing support with the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and for claiming April as Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month. It takes an entire community to end violence, and as leaders, you set the tone for others. My name is Esther.
And I'm Liz.
And we're with the North Coast Rape Crisis Team. We're advocates as well as prevention educators. The North Coast Rape Crisis Team has been here for 38 years, with an office here in Crescent City since 1988. We serve people of all ages and genders who have been directly or indirectly affected by any form of sexualized violence, regardless of when the trauma occurred. We may hear from someone who was raped today, or we may hear from someone who was harmed decades ago and is now reaching out for support. Because sexual abuse often happens in the context of child abuse, we provide services to children and their families and work towards the prevention of all forms of child maltreatment. Because it often happens in the context of domestic violence, we work with local allies towards ending all forms of intimate partner abuse and provide services to those who have experienced the violence. In addition to a wide range of free and confidential intervention services, we provide primary prevention programs to children as young as preschool, throughout elementary, junior, and senior high, as well as college, and other adult programs, including trainings for professionals who serve families.
Proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month is important because one out of three women, one out of 11 men, one out of four girls, and one out of six boys will experience some form of sexual abuse. Because it takes an entire community to address and end violence. Raising awareness about the issue is essential. During April, as you will see on the posters you received, there are a number of events. We would like to highlight just a couple. Local folks here are, for the first time in Delnor County, presenting the vagina monologues, which is benefiting several local organizations and tribes. The next two performances are in Smith River on the 7th and at Elk Valley on the 14th. We encourage you to check it out. Also, April 25th is International Jeans for Justice Day, which is a day to wear jeans to show your support of all survivors and break the myths that continue to blame and revictimize those who have been harmed. You have it, oh, you have it in your pocket, a sticker and information, and we hope you will join us in observing that day. Thank you again for your commitment to the work of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and to our vision, a world without violence.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
I had a couple of questions. How many volunteers do you have?
One.
One at the moment.
Okay. And how do you reach out to get more volunteers? I mean, do you need more volunteers?
Absolutely.
So...
It's just if people want to volunteer, then we will give them that information, but we usually don't try to push people to do that if they don't want to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Move on to our consent agenda, and we'll have our minutes next time. Thank you. So, items three through six.
Could we separate out items five and six from items two, three, and four?
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll talk about items three and four. Two, item two is the approval of the minutes. We'll get that next time. So, is there a motion to approve items three and four?
All right, so move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those pass. Item number five is consider and approve a consultant agreement with Stover Engineering to prepare a wastewater treatment plan, septicage management plan. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes, I have two issues with this. The first one is that we're looking at this potentially becoming a profit center. And as mentioned previously, whenever we have a profit center, it'd be nice to have a formula in place or discussions about creating a formula to return some of that profit so that the rate can be reduced to the ratepayers. So, that's the one issue. The second issue...
May I interrupt really quick? I'm so sorry. Mayor Protem, with there being warrant claims on the consent calendar, could you please ask for a poll vote?
I will. I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can I ask what you mean by a formula for...
Well, I was hoping that when we create any profit center having to do with the sewer system, if we're making a profit above and beyond what our operations and expenses, necessary things are, can we come up with a formula that would help to reduce the rate to the ratepayers?
Oh, you mean for sewer rates?
Yes.
Okay. That, I mean, I'm just saying that that doesn't have anything to do with this agreement, though.
She just said...
It's on the agenda.
It's on the septicage program. So, anything having to do with a program that is ultimately going to become a profit center, I think this is an item that we need to address and not shove under the carpet.
What is your second?
The second one is with Stover Engineering. Years ago, there was a vote to pay Stover Engineering when we didn't have a labor compliance program in place. And I asked that money be withheld until we knew how much he was being paid in labor compliance and to discuss why he should be paid when there wasn't a labor compliance program in that was working. But the council at that time voted to approve paying Stover Engineering. In my mind, I still don't know how much he was paid for labor compliance, and in my mind, I think he owes the city money for getting paid to do something that he didn't do. So, that's what I had to say.
Let me comment on the first one for a profit center. It's my understanding by, since we're not getting people to hook up to the wastewater plant, this septicage will make us somewhat of a little bit of money anyway before the people dump the sewage there. It'll help a little bit. But I think the, what you're talking about as a profit center is when we have to get hundreds of people to sign up to even break even, and I think that'll keep the costs level. And if they're going to go down, we'd have to have a lot of people sign up for new sewer. So, the septic, the septic is going to help us because we are not getting any signups right now for new sewer hookups. And so, this is going to help us with the plant on maintaining what we're charging now. That's, and as far as the other one, I wasn't on the council for the labor compliance, but if that, I'm just guessing that if that wasn't done at the start of the contract, after Mr. Stover was hired, I don't know that we could have held, the council could have held that money. But in this particular case, he's the lowest of two bidders, and he's $5,000 cheaper. So, I think the savings there, this is my opinion, outweighs previous.
At the time, it was Ms. Westfall's opinion that Mr. Stover did not do his job. It was not the opinion of the council. And he, the reason she points it out is because there was a subcontractor to the overall contractor who was made to pay a fine for not doing his paperwork correctly. Basically, he had a, an agreement with his employees to work four 10s instead of five eights since they were traveling from out of the area, and he shouldn't have done that. It was actually Mr. Stover's documents and records that he kept that provided that information to the state to find that subcontractor. So, it was the council's opinion that he was doing his job.
Well, I think, according to my reading, it looks like it's going to be about a two-year payoff, and I think we have a little time before we consider, you know, large profits coming from this endeavor. I'd kind of like to see it work. I'd like to see it work for a little period of time, and then we maybe could bring this back and talk about reducing those rates. Until that happens, let's see if those estimates are correct.
Any public comment on this matter? Yes.
I believe you need to hire Mr. Stover on this project because today I spent a few minutes at the building department reading the specs on the Honeydew machine, and it's kind of a complicated machine that's going to have to be added to our plant. And when this idea was sold to you people, Jim did an excellent job of explaining to you people that there was some complexity to this project. Two plumbers in this area explained the need for this equipment to assist the citizens of the city, well, mainly the county. And, you know, you all agreed to go along with this. So, I think you're doing the right thing by hiring Mr. Stover to oversee this project because you want it to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, I also am in favor of hiring Mr. Stover. I think that the, the rate that he's quoting is significantly less than the other rates that were quoted, and as such, I think it warrants action.
Motion to approve item five?
Yes, I would move actually that we approve numbers five and six of the consent agenda.
Well, we're going to take six separate. She has another.
Oh, okay.
Number five?
Number five.
Second.
It moved in second and to approve item number five at the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Votes?
Aye.
Actually, this involves money, so that should be a poll vote. Let's poll the vote on number five.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Mayor Protem Anea?
Yes. Now, let's go back to items three and four. That needs a polled vote. Councilmember Westfall made the motion, and Councilmember Shalong seconded it.
Yes.
Please pull the vote, please.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Anea?
Yes. Item number six is to consider and approve a resolution entitled, Resolution 2012-13, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City Electing to Receive a Portion of the Tax Increments Pursuing to Health and Safety Code Sections 33607.7 and 33607.5. Councilmember Westfall?
No, I don't have any thing to say on this. I want to listen to what discussion there is.
Yes, I was wondering if our finance director could come up and just give us a brief on it?
Absolutely.
Just for a second.
Finance director.
Renew my memory on this.
No problem. This is a pretty complex issue made by the most recent legislation, but any specific questions you wanted, or just maybe a Reader's Digest view of the whole thing? A few years back, and I can't remember exactly when AB 1290 was passed, it codified specific organizations getting a percentage of those pass-through payments from the redevelopment area. We chose not to take those because we wanted to put more money into redevelopment than into the city's general fund. Now, with this legislation that was just passed eliminating redevelopments, we now have the opportunity to go ahead and take that pass-through payment that will eventually come to the general fund when the redevelopment area is eliminated. So, we'll be, what we'll see is a more stable revenue trend in our general fund when those property taxes come back in full and there's no more redevelopment at all left.
Okay. So, we always could have, we always did have this money, but we just put it into the redevelopment. Now that we don't have redevelopment, we're going to put it in our general fund from those taxes.
Yeah, and most, the consultant that we talked to and the attorney, most cities have taken this election long ago. We were one of the few that didn't. But we consistently, over the past, have tried to get, you know, as much redevelopment activity as possible, you know, wringing every, every dollar we could out of...
Thank you. Any council comments? That money for our audience is $8,050. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Move to approve, oh, go ahead.
Public comment? Yes.
I have one question, and I read a background on this. Historically, when a city did its pass-through, there was one district that was given a percentage of the pass-through funds. And that was our library district. With elimination of the redevelopment agency now, if the city's going to use this schedule to put money in its general fund, is the library, is the library district going to historically get the small percentage of pass-through that went to them, or is that going to be eliminated too?
Thank you. Bring it back up to council. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve item number six.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved to approve item number six. Would you please poll vote?
Sure. Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Anea?
Yes. We'll move into our communications part, our public comment part of the meeting. Any member of the audience is invited to address the council on any matter that's in the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include a placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency, and public comment is limited to three minutes. Any public comment? Yes.
Soon, you people will be in your budget hearings again and thinking about the city's new budget period. I kind of had a laugh Saturday reading the Daily Tripplecut. There was, it's called Reporter's Notebook. In that series of little articles, it explained how the Lorax probably has added recently more to our TLT tax than anything Bob Berkowitz has done. Then, today I got a copy of the pilot. In the pilot, there is an insert called "American Profile." It told how Smith River and this area is the Easter lily capital of the world. I keep looking in the Sunset magazine for the promised ad that Bob Berkowitz and the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourist Bureau said they've put in there. I picked up the latest copy of the Sunset, and it's still not in there. I would hope, and I'm serious about this, we need police officers. I think, how can you expect people to come to this town when we don't have enough police officers to fight the crime that occurs on a daily basis here in Crescent City?
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. That's the end of the public comment period. We're going to move on to item number seven, which is a public hearing. And we're going to conduct a public hearing to consider, to weigh full reading and read by title only. An ordinance, introduce the ordinance, 768, An Ordinance of the City Council of Crescent City Adding Chapter 8.18 Noise Regulations to Title 8, Health and Safety of the City of Crescent City Municipal Code. Mr. Taylor?
As you said, we're presenting, basically, it's a noise ordinance. Currently, we don't have a noise ordinance within the municipal code for Crescent City. The ordinance is a necessary tool for combating unreasonable, excessive, and unnecessary and annoying noise that occurs within the city that affects not only residential areas but also businesses and individuals that reside within the city. This ordinance has been pretty carefully drafted, had a lot of help with Martha Rice also, I'll add. Basically, most ordinances that other communities have adopted relies on decibel levels and decibel meters to kind of judge the noise. The way we wrote this ordinance is really what's reasonable, what's a reasonable noise. It gives you standards to kind of determine what's reasonable and just, you know, outright outlaw certain noises, puts some standards on time limits for noises. But basically, long short, it comes down to what's reasonable.
Eric, are we leaving it up to each officer to determine what's reasonable?
Well, correct. And most laws are that way. I mean, it's really left up to the discretion of the officer to interpret that and enforce it. But it gives you some standards in it, gives you guidelines, and we can go over those. I can, I guess I can proceed two ways. I can go over this section by section if we want to go through it, or I can just turn it back and allow you guys to ask any questions you have.
I have, I have questions.
Yeah, I have a couple too.
I have a couple questions.
We'll do the questions. Let's start. Councilmember, Councilmember Westfall? Go ahead.
Yeah, on page four of nine, under "Specific Noises Prohibited," most of the complaints I get are from radios and stereos playing, well, people are driving around in their vehicles, and it seems to vibrate persons' home windows, you know, and it annoys. And so, they want to know, or I want to know, to be able to tell them what can be done. You know, if we pass this ordinance tonight, what will happen next? What does a person do? What's the procedure?
Well, it's like any other nuisance. I mean, you file a complaint. Unfortunately, you know, if it's happening and they're sitting outside, you can, probably if it's after hours, you can contact law enforcement. This gives them a tool, is an enforcement tool for them, as well as your code enforcement officer. If it's something that's reoccurring, you know, and we know it's a certain time of day or something's going to happen, or it afflicts a certain property, then we will go ahead and contact them, you know, and we'll send them a notice saying, hey, you know, you're in violation, and you need to take care of the problem. And if it becomes reoccurring, then obviously we have, there's two ways of dealing with it. One is we have the administrative citation process where we can find them. And that goes from first violation from 100 to 200, up to $500 for every violation. And then it also allows you, declares that every violation is also can be, is a misdemeanor. So, it really comes down to, if we wanted to, you could file, you know, charges against that individual, but you'd hope it wouldn't go that far.
You have another question?
I just thought that $100 and up seems a little excessive, so...
Well, it could be, right? I mean, the court doesn't have to find the $100.
Well, we would, we would do that.
We would do...
Right. We don't have to find them anything, we're not outside of anything. Obviously, we don't just go out and find, cite people. That's not the purpose. The purpose is to gain compliance.
Yeah.
So, we, you obviously give them plenty of opportunities to comply, but unfortunately, if you can't gain that compliance, you have to have some teeth in there to get that compliance.
Yeah. It'd be nice if you could just hand people a remote control, they could...
Sure. Unfortunately, that's...
Shut off that.
Right. So, unfortunately, this would get, it's a tool. And I know people, you know, when you try to enact these things, we have to be responsible, and that's why we try to do what's reasonable, and that's what that lays out. So, unless somebody's complaining, I mean, we're not going to drive around looking for people to enforce and write citations. Not, that's not the purpose of the ordinance.
Complaint-driven.
It's complaint-driven. And if it becomes, if it's an issue and we can verify the complaint, then we'll do something about it. Give us a tool to deal with it. So, unfortunately, and I can say I have a little, little more insight, being the code enforcement officer, I deal with a lot of complaints. And at this point right now, a lot of times I tell people, you know, I don't have an ordinance. We don't have any way to enforce this, and I don't have a lot of ways to help you out, which is unfortunate. And a lot of times, it becomes a law enforcement issue where they're continually calling law enforcement, and then you're having more staff time, and it becomes an issue.
Do you have another question?
No, that's basically it. Other than, I didn't see the schedule of fees.
That would be, that's actually under title, is it chapter five, I believe, for administrative citations? It's either one or five. It's in the municipal code. It's covered in a different section.
Okay.
Councilmember Shal?
My questions revolve around use permits and facilities that we would require or businesses to get use permits.
Under amplified sound?
Talk to me about what that means, because I personally, and maybe you can talk, talk me to the other side, I personally don't think that we should be charging for a use permit for businesses or organizations to follow an ordinance.
Okay. So, it's amplified sound. So, is any business that would have amplified sound where it's...
Right. So, in my mind, I'm thinking the Delnor County Fair is very noisy and ticks a lot of people off. Are we going to make them pay a use?
No. And again, it's reasonable. If you, if you read it, here's actually what it says.
Let me...
So, I'm thinking the fair, I'm thinking the high school sports is very loud. I'm thinking we have little Enoteca down on Third Street that plays music.
Sure. So, the fair would be exempt, actually, if you read what it says here. And we have exemptions also in the chapter.
I saw the exemption.
And there's exceptions you can apply for. But if you read under... But if you read under amplified sound, under point one hundred, it's within business, restaurants, bars, or other commercial establishments.
Let me kinda jump in there if I.
Go ahead.
Mayor Protemania?
Yes.
On the use permits, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong here on this, yeah, it's for businesses, if you're opening up or have an existing business, you know, which we can address, you know, that question, a restaurant that's gonna have live music. What this code's gonna require is that goes through a use permit process, so we can evaluate, you know, what that business or what that use is going to be, and we can, you know, work with them upfront on the requirements of this ordinance and to possibly condition them to comply with any noise requirements. Is that?
Right. And again, that's the key, it's conditional use permit. So, each permit actually would be individual to each establishment. So, there'd be different conditions.
I know, but it just doesn't seem right to charge a use permit to someone to follow an ordinance, follow an ordinance. I would say if they're.
It requires them to come in and apply for use permit to make, one, it makes us aware that their business is, you know, going in, they're.
Well, they have to have a business license anyway, so you know.
Under the code, and then we work with them to make sure that they understand, and, you know, we're able to possibly condition them, saying, you know, if you're gonna have live music, you know, maybe it's, you know, the hours of operation or certain.
So, I guess let me be clear, is it the fact that you don't wanna charge a fee that you have a problem with? Because we do charge.
I don't wanna charge a fee, I have a problem with that. But I also don't wanna restrict a business from doing business if they're providing live music after ten P.M.
Right. We're not really restricting the business, 'cause, and I'll add, I just talked to Alcohol Beverage Commission today too, and actually, any establishment that sells alcohol, which most of them that have the amplified noise here, are already under conditions, under those licenses. And basically, their general rule is, the noise shouldn't even be heard outside the establishment. And they also will set conditions for individual establishments. Now, unfortunately for us, the closest ABC office is in Eureka, and I believe they close by twelve o'clock. I mean, they're understaffed, so it's hard for us to enforce a lot of that stuff here. We can send letters of complaints, which we've done in the past, on certain individuals, and, you know, it's tough to get compliance. This gives us a tool here to deal with it ourselves. And I understand that part too. We don't wanna, it's not, it's not the intent of this ordinance, it's to restrict businesses, but it's trying to gain that harmony, because some of these businesses are affecting other businesses. Say, if you're next to a lodging establishment, or they're next to residences. And I've had several complaints about these issues, and this is why this was brought forth in this ordinance. So, this isn't a what-if, I mean, this is something that's going on now. And it's, we, really up to now, we haven't really had a way to deal with this. And again, it's been a lot of police.
Give me an example of a complaint, and then how you're gonna deal with it if this is passed.
Sure. I can give you a complaint, example of an establishment, a restaurant that's almost wall-to-wall to a hotel.
Well, we know where you're talking about, so.
Right. So, we've had several complaints, and we could almost be there nightly. And not myself, I'm talking law enforcement. And so, how you can deal with that, you can have different conditions. One, decibel levels, you can't exceed this decibel level. And so, that's the one part in this ordinance where we might set a standard like that. Maybe if, because they're together, maybe one of the conditions is you have to have some kind of a sound barrier on your wall. You know, some way to regulate that, so you're not affecting the other business. Because the other end, you have another business that's bringing in people to our community, and you're affecting them. So, that's, that's the goal here, is just to try to find that middle ground. We're not trying to hammer on anybody, we just wanna have a tool to be able to deal with these problems. And I have another example, another one that's close to an RV park. And I get calls constantly because they're having music to two o'clock in the morning. And these residents, you know, they're elderly, some have children, and they have to deal with this. And again, I have to tell them, I have, sorry, I don't have a noise ordinance, we have nothing regulating this now. You know, if it's, maybe it's disturbing the peace, call the, call a police department, and that's unfortunately what's been happening.
No.
You know, I wanted to comment on that too. You know, existing businesses, I don't, I don't see, that already have amplified music, I don't see why we need to charge them for a use permit now. I think that ought be grandfathered in until they sell it, till they sell the business. And then any new business, I think ought to pay the conditional use permit, because that way you get a chance to check it ahead of time, to see if it's gonna be a problem. Because the one that we have, it's a problem already, this is before this. But that way, you get a chance to see if there's gonna be a problem in that building nearby or whatever. And I can see charging for the conditional use permit for new, or change of ownership, but not for the existing ones. But I, for the existing ones, I can see going over there and giving them our new ordinance, and that they need to comply with it. But I don't see it, I don't see a need to charge them, I think we ought to grandfather them. That's my, that's my opinion.
Maybe that's an adjustment we need to make to the fee schedule, I'm not sure how that would work out.
So, that's just my opinion, I don't think they need to be charged.
Well, I think if you have a new restaurant or a new establishment, they have to come in and get a city business license anyway. So, when they get their city business license, they can get a copy of the noise ordinance, and they can follow it. They shouldn't have to pay to follow it.
Yeah, I'd just like to put in my two cents worth that I disagree with Rich Anea. I don't like having any more fees, especially in this economic climate, when we're trying to attract new businesses and create more jobs. I just don't like the idea of creating another fee.
Okay, well, I'd just want to add, it's a one-time cost, and what, basically what that covers, 'cause they're gonna have to come to the planning commission, it covers staff time for preparing the report, it covers having the five planning commissioners show up, conducting the meeting, I mean, that's really what it covers, it just covers our expense of actually just holding the meeting for, for the use permit.
You have to publish.
Correct. Well, that's what I'm saying, for the whole conduct and renting this facility, publishing, I mean, it really covers, just covers our cost.
Why do they have to have a permit to conduct business if, if they're opening a business in the city, and they have to follow our ordinances?
I don't understand exactly which.
I can address that or try and.
Go ahead.
Answer your question, it's a good question.
Well, I'll just say, the reason for a permit, as opposed to just handing them a copy of the ordinance and say, here, follow this, is it allows the planning commission to hear from neighbors, to state their concerns. It allows for specifically designed measures, such as noise, a noise barrier, or even more restricted hours of operation. You can imagine if something was going on next to a rest home or a nursing facility, you might say, you know, no operation after daylight hours.
But are, but your zoning would cover those issues?
Probably. I mean, yes, you're right. But I'm, I'm trying to come up with examples.
Not necessarily though.
The kinds of things that a use permit would allow you to impose on a case, the thing about a use permit, it's case by case.
Like we did for the fish market. Right. Neighbors were concerned about.
I'm not advocating for it, I'm trying to tell you what is covered, and also the fact that the fee, there are costs associated with it, especially staff cost. I doubt that the two twenty-five really covers, you know, the total time that would be involved. So, if you're gonna dump the fee, I would say dump the use permit too. And see how this, you could see how this works, you can bring the use permit idea back in a year or two, based on actual experience.
Let me add to that, 'cause the, in your zoning code, you have uses that are permitted, and you have uses that are permitted with conditional use permits. You know, and the reason that codes are set up with the conditional use permit, saying, hey, it's an okay use within this area, within this zoning, but it may have some specific things going on with that business, like a noise generator, that we wanna take a look at a little bit more closely, to come to the planning commission, notice, you know, the surrounding neighbors, you know, possibly there's some input that, you know, the planners or staff or, you know, the applicant have, hasn't thought of, that comes out.
Wouldn't that be handled with their business license?
No. You know, the business licenses are typically, you know, uses that are permitted. You know, a conditional use permit, you know, is an application process where we look at that, you know.
That's if their use is not permitted in that zone.
No, it could be potentially permitted use, so in a commercial district, may say restaurants are allowed, but it doesn't have any other, any other conditions of use on it, so it's just an allowed use. So, that's what this ordinance is for, to look at those other possibilities, like amplified sound. So, if they say on their license that they wanna have the amplified sound, then that would kick in, that's something we would look at under the use permit. So, in your zoning ordinance, you have some uses that may be questionable in that area, so you would have a conditional use permit required, such as the fish processing. So, you wanna make sure that it conforms with the businesses around it. So, that's really what this is for, you know. So, a restaurant may be allowable use in the commercial district, but so if that restaurant wants to serve alcohol and possibly have the, you know, the amplified sound, then that's something we're saying, well, we need to take a look at, maybe we need to condition that a little bit, 'cause that could affect neighboring businesses.
So, how, so if I'm a restaurant and I wanna have live music, and I'm already conditioned by the ABC, now you're going to condition me twice, and maybe your conditions are different than ABC's conditions?
I think, well, typically, and Bob can correct me on this, as the law has written, usually you have to meet those standards, and we can impose stricter standards if we see fit. But again, it's a conditional use permit, it'd be on a case-by-case basis. So, if you say, like, the business is downtown, that's only playing music in the middle of the night, and all the businesses are closed, well, you're probably not gonna have, the need to be that restrictive on that business. You're not gonna get the complaints, you're not really affecting anybody, 'cause nobody's around. But again, if you have a business that's connected to a hotel, that's a twenty-four-hour-a-day business, you know, there's gonna be some issues. So, you really need to take a look at that, see what can we do to ensure compatibility. That's really what you're looking at.
Well, I don't know if you're gonna have compatibility, but both of the uses are permitted. And they've been next to each other for years.
I just had a couple of points, actually. The first one is, I'm pleased to see this before us, because the one area that I've experienced is animals and dogs barking, and that will drive neighbors crazy, because they lack sleep, and I don't know if it can lead to violence or not, but I know, we've all practically been there. So, I'm glad to see, I think that will prevent maybe some law enforcement issues, if we can stop some of those dogs from barking. In the, at the county level, though, I know that it requires three citizens to make a complaint in order to convene their hearing over in that environment. Here, actually, one citizen could, could make a complaint and have it followed up. Is that correct?
Sure. They can make a complaint, but then we'd go out and see, well, is this reasonable? Is this a reasonable complaint? And that's actually, when you, if you look back, what talks about what's reasonable, it actually mentions, one of the things it gives you as a guideline, is the amount of people that are affected by the noise.
Good. The only, the other thing, I went out of town for a while, and I came back, and my car alarm had gone off all night. You just take that into consideration, that it's a one-time situation, or?
Sure. And again, it's.
I think we should find Mr. Holly.
Well, yeah.
I agree.
I'm gonna shoot down this ordinance there.
Actually, it's supposed to reset, isn't it?
Mine didn't, but anyway, I, it occurred to me that once in a while, you hear car alarms going off throughout the city, and that can be annoying.
And again, you know, I don't, there's always that, that kinda fear, but it's, yeah, it's, again, it's what's reasonable, we're not gonna come out there, if it's reoccurring night after night after night, then we probably step in and say something, hey, if it's a one-time deal, hey, I was out of town, this was an accident.
Thank you. My battery died. It didn't.
Is there any other questions? I'll open it up for public comment, is there any public comment on this? Yes.
I wanna thank the planning commission, Eric, and the chief of police for finally coming up with this type of ordinance. I can say that in my neighborhood, the chief has solved my bark and dog problem. But I have some other concerns, and I wanna explain something to you. I think you people need to put some charges on some businesses if they don't comply to ordinance. And I wanna give you a couple of examples, and groups. When a business on Third Street initially opened up, every Friday, they were having music. Unfortunately, because of the ocu, you know, the, they can have so many people in the business at the time, th- their patrons would pour out onto the city street. Well, on a cold winter night, I live downtown, I could hear their music. So, I didn't have to go down to this bar and buy their happy hour drink for two dollars, 'cause I could hear their music. There's been times when groups have rented our cultural center on cold winter nights. And let's say, I remember one high school prom that got kinda loud, and you could hear the music clear over to my house. Then the best example is sometimes my county rents out the veterans hall to, I think they're called Sweet Seventeen Parties. And the chief can tell you, sometimes they get out of hand and a little noisy, and law enforcement has to go and tell them to turn down the music. So, amplified music is a problem in this town, besides roosters in the morning and barkin' dogs.
Any other public comment? Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, Roger Getlin, I live in the city. I'm confused by this ordinance. I didn't hear any timeframes associated with it, after hours or before hours, but of all the things on your plate, if this is a priority that you're rating high, I would respectfully disagree with you, that people having fun is a good thing. Do we not have existing laws on the books for disturbing the peace, or do we have to put more government, over government, to put now a noise ordinance? And the fact that it's punitive is almost a clandestine way of collecting additional fees from, from businesses. I didn't hear if this is a private thing, does it involve industrial businesses that are ongoing? I mean, this is a very vague thing that you guys are wading into, and I would caution you accordingly. And as, as far as someone is concerned, we all have issues with people who are disturbed by different things, and I hope you don't lower that threshold to the point where someone's barkin' dog is getting the attention of the police department, which are already overtaxed. And maybe just a good old plain conversation with the neighbor, I've tried that a couple of times too, maybe that'll work. So, I hope you reconsider this noise ordinance as a way of, another layer of government that may not be necessary. We may already have laws on the books to protect ourselves from unnecessary noise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I suppose you want more than three minutes.
I'll try not to.
Just kidding.
Thank you. Evening.
Good evening.
When Eric came to me regarding this ordinance, he asked for the input, and the police department wholeheartedly agrees with this ordinance. It does really identify the problems that this particular city is experiencing, not at a state level, but within our own jurisdictions. This is very, very well crafted, I believe, and I would say, under section zero six zero on the specific noises, I really like it, because each and every noise is broken down to the times that they can and cannot have these ordinances, which is, which is terrific. And so, therefore, we do, at the police department, experience more than half of these specific ordinances that have been identified tonight. So, I think in the long run, I think this also expedites the type of issues that Mr. Holly brought up in regards to animals. If a dog is barking incessantly throughout the night, we have to wait until the next morning, call animal control, come on down, and then they give them two or three warnings. And so, therefore, it doesn't really get rectified as quickly as it should. With this ordinance, the officer can go down there, the officer can go ahead and speak to the individual, and we're all forgetting, the officers aren't gonna go down there and right off the bat, give them citations. They're going to want to get a compliance from the citizen. If they don't wanna comply, yes, a citation is gonna be in order. However, up to that point, we're gonna wanna work it out and make it best for the citizens, as well as for the city, and this ordinance allows that, allows that to happen as well. So.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any council comments?
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Did you check on the solid waste ordinance for operation hours for recology?
I know you're referring to it here, but I have not verified with theirs.
'Cause you have on here, refuse collection vehicles cannot operate past seven P.M. and before six A.M. in residential and.
At five in businesses.
Yeah. I just, they should. Yeah. Just, they should probably match with solid wastes operation of hours.
This will come back in the next-
Yeah.
And I'd just like to add real quick one, that this has been the planning commission not once. We've had two public meetings passed, and they actually did put some input and made some changes on this ordinance. Doug's already verified that it's gone to him and he's approved of this. City Attorney has approved of this ordinance.
Yeah, I've noticed that. This has been planned for three years. This started in 2009, when I was on the planning commission. So it's not something that's rushed into. And you know, this is the best noise ordinance that I have ever seen, and I've worked in four of the departments in the San Francisco Bay area. And let me tell you, for the public to know, why it's good to have a city ordinance on noise. Because people don't like to complain about their neighbor generally. And if you, disturbing the peace, if your neighbor's disturbing the peace by loud music, you call the police department, the police officer has to have a signed citizen's arrest, which means you, as a neighbor, have to sign a complaint against your neighbor. And so people-
The process is to invite your neighbors to your party.
Right, that's the process. With a city ordinance, it's complaint-driven, the neighbor can call and say they're having all kinds of music at the house, the officer goes, he hears it, it's a city ordinance, he can take action by going and saying, hey, you have to turn the music down, we have a noise ordinance. Generally, that'll take care of it. If it doesn't, it might lead to a citation. It really helps with dogs, because animal control won't come out the next day unless it's been verified that the dog was barking at 3:00 in the morning. Who can verify that? The police department. Because animal control in this county barely has a person to work daytime. Maybe the supervisors can change that in the future and have an animal control officer here 24 hours a day. But right now, it's up to the police. And so-
I don't mind, I don't mind a noise ordinance.
Right.
I just don't agree with the fee for a use permit. And, and I don't want to deter a business making a profit if they're going to do business after 10:00 PM.
Okay. Well, is there a motion with an amendment to it? For, any type of motion?
I would be supportive and would make a motion to accept the noise ordinance without a use permit.
Without a use permit or a use permit fee?
Why would you have a use permit if you don't have, I don't understand.
Because that gives the, that gives the planning commission a chance to look at the business and see if amplified sound is going to bother neighbors that might live right next door.
I think if you're going to, I think City Hall needs to adjust when they accept a business license. They need to know what that business is going to be performing, and if they're going to be, they're going to have amplified sound, then that can be addressed.
As part of the ordinance?
As part of their business license. But they need to follow the-
The noise-
The ordinance.
Could I clarify?
Sure.
You have a number of options. You could still require the conditional use permit, but you could waive it for all businesses that are in place, in existence, on the day this ordinance is adopted. You could eliminate the use permit entirely and just direct staff to revisit that issue with you in a year, to see whether the lack of a use permit process has made enforcement more difficult or impossible. Or you could eliminate both, and the reason to eliminate both, well, I guess my second suggestion would include that, but I, I have a, I think it's a significant problem to burden your staff with a bunch of new use permits and no fee. I just think there's-
I have it too.
...publication, there's hearings, there's staff time, it's going to be, the staff time could be quite considerable if you have a complicated one. So, you know, I think you should, you should go with all one or all of the other. But there is a middle ground, too.
My motion is to accept the noise ordinance without a use permit or fee, with direction to staff to get six months to a year under their belts, to see if we are having enforcement issues.
Is there a second?
I can second that.
Questions? Clarifications?
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering if this will give staff enough information. I was looking at your face with the, the-
Yeah, I think we have enough information to know it's a problem now. I mean, so I'm not sure what we're going to know in six months, if it's a problem or not, I'm not sure.
The noise is a problem, and you haven't had the tool to handle it. Now, you'll have a tool, you'll have an ordinance to handle it, but you won't, we won't require a business to get a use permit.
Does that interfere? My question is, does that interfere with enforcement of this ordinance?
It'll be, I think it's going to make it more difficult. I mean, it's just going to be more and more time to keep dealing with these places. And a lot of the issues, you know, a lot of these things occur at nighttime. So again, it's going to be a law enforcement issue then to come back and enforce these things, the problems.
But that's two different things. I mean, the ordinance covers what can and cannot happen after 10:00 PM and before 7:00 AM.
So the motion is to approve the ordinance at this first reading, and to not enforce the conditional use permit, and to check within the next six to 12 months to come back to us, to tell us if that's working or not. That's the motion. Is there a second?
I second it, but it also eliminated a fee, not only the conditional use permit, but no fee.
Okay. Well, there'll be a fee for, if they continually break the ordinance.
They'd be fined.
Yeah, but not fee for a conditional use permit.
Well, if there is no permit, there is no fee.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fee structure is in a separate fee schedule that the city has, so.
Right.
So we will, we will pull the vote on this one, and this is the first reading of it, and it'll be brought back to us. So if you please pull the vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaloon?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Mayor Protemania?
Yes. So I imagine this will be coming back next month?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Thank you. Okay, that's item number seven. Item next is reports. Are there any reports, staff?
Yeah, some updates from the council that I provided you, a management report. This, we've gotten a lot of positive comments with some of our property cleanups.
It looks so much better.
So thank you to Eric, you know, for, and Bob to, you know, get that accomplished and done.
You know, it surprised me, because I couldn't see it because of all the growth, that you took 1,000 pounds of trash from the properties.
Yes.
1,000 pounds.
That's just from one piece.
Just one, one-piece-
The one on North Crest Drive, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and there are several, you know, homeless camps, you know, there as well. There is, so it was, I think, a very significant impact on our community of getting those properties cleaned up.
It looks excellent.
And then also this last week, you know, just, you know, a lot of our city crews did a lot of, you know, good work, you know, with this last storm. We had a lot of water flow, you know, through our pipes and sewer treatment facility. So we kept up with it and we worked hard in making that happen.
Were there any significant flooding areas in the city that we need to address?
I don't believe so.
No.
I know there were very large ones in the county.
Yeah, there were. There in county had them. You know, we had some areas where we had to really monitor and watch our, our pipe systems, you know, Second Street, you know, in particular, and that's one that we've addressed that needs to be replaced. So those areas that we were, kept a pretty close eye on and making sure that we didn't have any problems.
I know there was a place on Highway 101, just north of Smith River, where I, on Friday, hydroplaned. And I decided not to continue on my trip to Brookings, and when I came back, two cars in the same place had hydroplaned and hit head-on. And so Caltrans, I think, has a little bit of work to do in that area, for that amount of water.
Lot of water that came down.
And I also know that there was a wreck today with Blue Star Gas, and-
Yes.
I don't know any of the details, but I hope that the driver was okay.
That was in Clamath. I don't know the details, but apparently a truck, Blue Star propane truck, you know, went off the road. I don't know all the details, but it happened earlier this morning.
Yeah. I was just stuck in traffic down there for like an hour, so I didn't know what happened. And then I saw the truck being hauled away, so I hope everybody was okay.
And Protem, I also had some legislative information in the packet for the city council requesting two letters to be signed by the mayor in support. One is for 1585, that's some legislation that addresses the redevelopment-
Cleanup.
Updates and supporting that legislation, and that is recommended by the Lead California Cities. And then also the harbor has asked for letter support in a grant, Tiger Grant application that they are applying for, for harbor funds. And I strongly recommend that the council support those. And I also provided other information, lot of legislation starting to pick up the pace and happening. I'll do my best to keep up with what's going on and report to the council on any issues that I think we need to address.
What, is that the, what, the legislation that you mentioned, is that the same as the AB 261X?
Yeah, that's, it's, update AB 261X is 1585, is a bill that was introduced by President, passed the Assembly. And it actually will, in the letter that it, that is written there, it will hopefully address, you know, some of our issues that we do have with our agency on our loan plans.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes, did you want to comment on our storms?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that our streets did well, but also tsunami landings seemed to drain fine, and there were high flows at the treatment plant, and it handled them well, up to 13 million gallons a day, which is very high flows, because the plant before could handle about six or seven. So we would add, you remember the issues we used to have down at Safeway in that area, and you didn't see any of those this weekend, and that was, there was collection system issues, because it was probably the most stress we have seen on the sewer system since I've been here, in the eight years I've been here. So it's always a good test, and you see areas that you need to adjust, because you don't get these circumstances very often, so you can't just see how the systems are going to react. And so we see areas in the collection system, especially in the county, we take care of the CSA system. So we see some areas that we could use some help in certain areas, but also just wanted to report that the treatment plant did well under those circumstances.
Yeah, we're happy to hear that.
Thank you for the information. Okay, we're on continuing business, which we have none. New business, we don't have any. Council item legislative matters, and in your packet there, you saw those legislative updates and the two letters of support. Are we in agreement that we send those letters?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we will send those letters. Okay, and city manager reports and county, report and council directives. Does the city council have any thing they want to talk to the city manager about?
No, I did not.
Okay. Okay, let's go to reports concerning referrals and training. Councilmember Westfall?
I attended a senior center board meeting. I think that it went well. They were reviewing changes, and one of the things that was voted down was they tried to impose limits on the board members. I think that probably the, the attendance being poor had affected that. I also attended a tri-agency specific planning session, where we discussed the importance of creating jobs and bringing in businesses, and the goals for the next year. Attended a solid waste meeting and another tri-agency meeting.
Is it? Councilmember Holly?
Thank you. I, too, attended the tri-agency strategic planning session. It's particularly interesting, and there's some exciting things happening out there, and still some planning to be done. But it's good we have a, we have a organized method through which we're going to see our goals realized. So I appreciated that process. That took a whole Saturday morning, but it was a Saturday morning worth spending. We also had, as Donna mentioned, a subsequent tri-agency meeting, which was somewhat shorter, but important nonetheless. I attended the LAFCO meeting, Transportation Commission meeting, solid waste management, which is everyone's favorite. And I understand today that I've been appointed to the senior center board as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to have that appointment, because I was the, the adult services supervisor for the County of Del Norte-
So you're appointed as a, as a citizen?
No, I think I've been appointed as-
I thought-
A councilperson.
Our council is not on the senior center board anymore.
I talked to the executive director today.
The acting?
I think, you know, the way I understand it is, it's a, it's a request by the board. You know, they, they go out and they ask for participation. I don't think it's something-
Well, the city used to sit on their, their board of directors, just like the county does. And when you and Catherine put together your list of committees that we were not going to be on this year, the senior center was one of them.
And we went through that, and it was my understanding that that's a committee that the council doesn't assign, it's a, a request by the senior center board.
Right.
If they want a representative, they would-
Well, prior to this year, we always assigned somebody.
So have they requested, have they requested a member from the city?
I, I was talked to early on by Martha McClure at the county, and then Charlene Maisy has had a couple of subsequent conversations with me. So I didn't know this was going to be a controversial issue.
No, it's not controversial.
No, it's just-
That's fine.
It's just never happened that way.
With all due respect, just, whenever you guys get those lists of appointments and whatnot, those are always carried over from year to year to year. There's never been any changes to the particular dialogue, and within the dialogue of the senior center, it says that there was a member appointed by the senior center. So that's just the information that I have, is the way that it was. It was appointed by the board.
And that was one of the things that, you know, Patch and I were trying to update through this last, you know, committee assignments, is trying to outline and really clarify how these boards or these, you know, committees are created and, you know, what, you know, the backup documentation is. So, you know, as, you know, we move forward in the upcoming years, it's clear to us, you know, how-
Yeah. I just know as the mayor for two years, I appointed somebody. So that's how it works. So that's why I didn't know it was any different.
Welcome, welcome to the board and look for your reports.
Why, thank you.
So what is your report, besides being appointed?
I think I'm done with my report. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Shaloon?
I'll just skip. Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. And I attended the chamber meeting, Chamber Board of Directors meeting.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. And we all attended solid waste, also attended LAFCO. That was a good meeting, too. That's about it, I can't remember anymore. Any other?
Mayor Protem, you got to add two things, you know, two comments to discussion on the tri-agency strategic plan meeting on Saturday. I, too, was in attendance, and Jay Serina was there as well, and it seemed to be a consensus of the group that they wanted Jay and I to sit down with the tri-agency, the chamber, and the visitors bureau, to kind of discuss economic development and their overall, all three strategic plans for this upcoming year.
It's a good summation.
A good summation, you know.
Good luck with that.
Pardon?
Good luck with that.
Thank you. So, yeah, I definitely want the, you know, the city council to know that, you know, that that was coming on the meeting. I talked to Jay since then, and we're trying to schedule a meeting, just to get all, all the groups together and they'll report back to the city council.
And then maybe you can get them all under the same roof, and, yeah.
If-
What was the second thing?
The second comment was, the Chamber's Economic Summit is coming up next week. I did send everybody an email, just if you're interested in attending that, please let me know. You know, and it's Westfall, and she sent me an email saying, you know, she's interested in attending, so I'll get everybody signed up.
I'll be there.
You want to do that as well, so I'll get you signed up.
I think I am.
You already signed up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, anything else? If not, we will stand adjourned until our next regular meeting, which will be April 16th. Thank you very much.